Good evening, calling the Board of Selectmen meeting to order on Tuesday, September 24th, 6:32. First item on the agenda is to approve the secretary's reports from September 10th, regular meeting, and September 3rd, special meeting. Did you guys have a chance to review?
Did, I had one adjustment to the September 3rd. Item 3, paragraph 2. It says Russell posed a question about the parking lot issues. My real question was that this, the parking lot would take about six months. In that case, would we still need this assistant? And the answer was yes. So it's just the way this is positioned is a little different.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
That's a question.
I can give you these notes if you want.
Sure, that would be great.
If that at all helpful.
Okay. So with that one correction, anything, Duane, did you find anything else?
I'm good.
So can I have a motion to accept the special meeting minutes for September 3rd?
I'll make the motion to accept the meetings with the changes for Catherine would like.
Okay. Oh, so is the 10th okay too?
Yep.
Want to do a votes again?
Yep.
Okay, so, so I have Gates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item is our first audience of citizens. Looks like we have a number of folks here. Anyone like to address the board?
Tony Ballack, 27 Est. Street.
Sorry, I have somebody online, but somebody here in the audience was going first. Is that okay? Thank you.
Tony Ballack, 27 Est. Street. I just had a quick question about the transfer station. So I know you just are going to have volunteers show up there to kind of police everything. And so my question is, we have constables in town. Are we going to appoint these people as constables so they can police? Or, I'm just curious, what power they actually have to stop anybody? And it was just a concern. And my thought was, maybe we do make them constables because then that gives them actual town authority. Anyway, just a thought, not really a question.
All right, well, we set this up so we weren't really addressed the audience back, but we are going to talk about the transfer station committee a little later. So if we don't answer that question, maybe in the second audience of citizens you can
ask again.
You can ask again. All right, we have someone online. Carrie, is that you?
Good evening, everyone. I really just wanted to come on tonight because I saw on the agenda that you guys are going to be discussing later tonight a blight ordinance for the town of Deep River. And it just was very timely because I recently read through all of the ordinances of Deep River, which was not a waste because I learned quite a bit. But we don't have a blight ordinance. And on my street, we have a situation where I feel like I don't have any recourse in terms of some things that, you know, have been costly on our part. There's some scrap meddling business going on and some other things going on. And we've replaced three tires in our own house. And not having that, I think, is kind of difficult in terms of recourse when there's actual damage happening to other residents on the street. So I just wanted to quickly express my support for a blight ordinance in town. I admit, I haven't been following discussions that have been going on about this, but I just wanted to let everyone know that there is a need out there for that. And I did go look at what Connecticut has and something about we have to have 15,000 for it to automatically, citizen, application of 15,000 for it to automatically apply, but obviously, we're too small for that. So that was all I wanted to say was that I, you know, I support that.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind sharing what street you're on, or would you rather not?
Nope, I can. My address is 37 Hillside Terrace.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, I have another online, Peter, anyone here? Another audience of citizens? Okay. Number four, appointments. So I put James Lockhart in here. I didn't want to force your hand. Did you have a chance to reach out to James?
I did not, but I'll catch up to him tomorrow.
Okay. So he currently serves on the Sustainable Committee, and we had appointed him in our administration. And he had a lot of interest. He's been helping out the Transfer Station Committee already for the last couple of months as kind of a volunteer, so.
I did talk with him. He's quite dedicated, eager to do it, can't wait to get started. I think he'd make a great addition to the Transfer Station Committee.
Okay. Can I have a motion to appoint James?
I move that we appoint James Lockhart to the Transfer Station Advisory Committee, effective immediately.
Great.
I'll second it, and I'll reach out to him tomorrow.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, so number five was Town Hall and Region 4 Building Updates. At one point, our building inspector was thinking he'd attend the meeting, so we thought he would have more discussion on that. So at this point, I can give a few notes about the Town Hall, but I think we've already kind of stated them before. Phase 1 was completed, and I did mention what we had spent last time. Right now, the building official is talking to different, I don't know if they're contractors, but we're trying to figure out what size dehumidifiers we need downstairs. And once that is established, then I would imagine we'd have the scope of work, we'd have to do the RFP, and it would move forward like that. So at this point, nothing really new to report about the Town Hall basement, but it is all cleaned out, and it's much drier. They've removed a lot of the lower walls, if they were sheet rock, and absorb the moisture, so it's very clean down there. Even the jail, part of the jail wall was cut away. So apparently, if we had somebody in the jail, since it's a sheet rock wall, they probably could have busted out, like I was just saying. Region 4, no, you're on that committee. Do you have anything to report?
We had a walkthrough last Thursday before our weekly meeting. It's moving along very well. We're shooting for, right after Christmas break, to have the children back into school. That's, we're holding their feet to the fire, and that's what we're shooting for. It's going to take a couple of weeks for the custodial staff to get, you know, the school final cleaning and get the teachers moved in, so that's why we're hoping to be done like the first week of December. And by the time they get everything cleaned, when the kids come back from after winter break, they'll be in their new school. On the fields, they've had several games already on the football field, the front field, and it's going very well. There's been a lot of attendance up there. And the backfield is all turfed, or they're just finalizing the turf there on the backfield. So that's all I have. I know there was a meeting, but I didn't attend it, on the security.
Yeah, so I was able to attend. All three of us were invited, but it was odd times, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, so I was able to scoot up there. They reported on the security project, John Winthrop. That includes that new security entrance. As you come up the hill, it's that first circle where the students would go in and get dropped off with parents, not the backside where the buses drop off. So it's that first side. It's going to include a new elevator, and they kind of went over some of the specifics and then just talked about what, one of the things that our building official asked to have changed is the size of the elevator, so it could accompany a stretcher or something like that in case there was ever emergency. So you have to make the elevator a little bigger. So that was one of the changes. And then I guess after it passes everything on the local level, it goes to the state to get approval for the design. And they're thinking maybe next spring would be the earliest that work could start up there, because then they'd have to do the RFD and that sort of thing. And then there was a lot of talk with the police and the fire marshal and the building inspector because our building official, again, while they're doing any of that work, they want to make sure the school is secure. So it definitely is something that they're talking about.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, number six, follow-up to drainage issue on Oak Ridge Drive property. Again, we were thinking the building official would be here. We do have the resident here. Lisa, would you like to address the board, or wait till the audience of citizens? Do you have anything?
I think we have all the material that was available. I will say I spoke with the Home Remediation Committee today, and they said it has traveled upstairs as they suspect it has in the past days, that we will be out of our house for six months to, while it's being remedied and repaired.
Well, our goal is to have that work started immediately. We've signed the contract, so we are, we are on your side. We're trying to resolve this. I think the Board of Selectmen is going to have a meeting and kind of just make sure all our ducks are still in a row and that sort of thing, so we can support you moving that forward. But I know the pipes have been dropped off on your front lawn, so.
I personally think that we have to get this going. You know, the poor homeowner here, and it's not because I know them, but it's been nine months, and it's been sitting there and sitting there and sitting there. We have to get it done. We keep kicking the can, kicking the can. It's not fair for them. We're coming at the cold season, and I don't believe they even have a furnace yet.
We don't. We can't do it until the remediation is done.
So what is holding us up at this point?
Well, we have a signed contract.
Yep.
And I think the, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think there's something that contractor is holding up something, maybe.
Well, we have to, we have to.
The contractor stated that they could dig and ditch and use the existing drainage. The engineer reported that we got 36-inch pipe. So we believe the contractor, or we believe the engineer?
Well, we have an engineering report, we have a signed contract. I think where we need to have this meeting with our building inspector to understand, I am not sure, I don't know if you are, Carol, if the contractor, vendor has had the onsite meeting with the head of public works.
They have.
So it's all set?
They've had a couple of meetings on their property.
So what, so what are we waiting on? We just need this follow-up meeting with Dick?
I, I think there's just a stance that the contractor has taken that doesn't line up with the signed contract at this point.
Okay.
So we have to work through whatever that issue is.
And frankly, I don't have a lot of faith in that contractor. I would not have picked that contractor. So I expect someone from the town to monitor his work and make sure the pitch and ditch is correct, to hand that the culverts and the pipe match, because they got it right now.
I think, I think that we have to have a meeting with Dick and all of us, and we have to put a drop dead date that contractor has to get started. And I want that date to be Monday, because again, we're, October's here, rain season's coming. If we don't get ahead of this, we've had six weeks of no rain, that job should have been done. These ladies spent hours, oh, I'm sorry, these ladies have spent hours moving all their flowers, took down the fence that was all part of the bid that the contractor was supposed to take care of. And now they're saying that we don't need to change it? It's wrong, these ladies.
Before we get the information, with all due respect, and I can't imagine what you've been through, it's just overwhelming.
Anytime you like.
Overwhelming. But there was a delay in signing that contract. Let's not rush to judgment or malign a contractor till we have this meeting, we find out the facts, and are ready to move. There does seem to be a problem in scheduling meetings. So can that be something that Tina can help with and get Dick on board?
We can schedule a meeting, there's not a problem with that.
Was there a, I don't know, question on the contract? Was there a timeline in the contract? Does the rain start, rain should end? Usually contracts have all that stipulation.
There's a contract, there's a date for finish that has to be done by the end of October, I believe. I don't know if there was a start date that was specified in there.
Is it possible for me to get a copy of that contract since I'm responsible for part of it?
Should be able to.
Yes. Should I email it to you?
That would be great, thank you.
So most likely, we can do that maybe in the next day or two.
Yes, as soon as we can get Dick scheduled.
But we spend a lot of money on professional engineers, Jacobson, that are towns engineers.
Yeah.
They recommend for this pipe, that's why we hire them. There are, there are people, there are engineers.
Yeah, I'm going to figure whatever the engineer says to do, because we did, we paid them for their consultation. So that is, that would be my stand too. But okay, we will schedule a meeting the next two days, so we can notice it, and we are going to try to get that done.
I have one other question. When this thing starts and they do this, who's supervising the whole project to make sure, you know, it's all done, implemented correctly, right grade, all that stuff? I mean, is that the engineer that's going to do that, that you guys hired, or?
Typically, they're not on site, but it would probably be our town DPW staff that would be there to oversee.
Okay. As long as someone's there.
Yeah. We have the, we want it to be done right as well.
Yeah, right.
Not just that you have another resident there that all this water dumps onto his property.
Oh, you're also impacted, okay.
Besides all this, not, I don't think it can be addressed during the project, but wasn't, I feel a consideration with the whole design, if you take the 36-inch pipe and jettison it straight out the way that it's designed right now, and we get flows like we do, I would lose my labor. And I pay a fair amount of money for that piece of property and taxes, and I paid for it to purchase that for the pleasure for my family. So I have some concern as to how that gets finished. I don't think that it's a challenging thing to overcome, but again, I'm not an engineer, but I would certainly like to see some modification to the way that it is jettisoned into my property at the end of the day.
Supposedly.
Are you, are you on the corner of Oak Ridge and?
I own, I own a piece of property at the corner of Oak Ridge Drive and Tower Hill Lake Road, and the drainage comes underneath Tower Hill Lake Road and directly into my property. It enters a small spring stream that skirts around the edge of the property. It has been that way since I purchased the property. So I'm just looking to try to maintain that instead of a, you know, when we get a major rainstorm, have a large amount of water go straight across my lawn and lake and everything else.
So you've got the lakefront parcel there?
Correct.
Yeah, I was out there in a big rainstorm and I saw that, what you're talking about.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, just update on town vehicles. They're getting marked with the town's.
Transfer.
Transfer Station Committee. She's two Ts there, jumped right ahead. So number seven, okay. So number seven, as Tony had just mentioned earlier, we have a great Transfer Station Committee that have been very active, meeting almost every week. But we're starting the enforcement on October 1st, and that was something back in December that our, the Board of Selectmen heard, all the residents really pushed us to enforcement, enforcement, until we get that under control, they don't want to hear about any other things we want to do with the transfer station, was sort of the message loud and clear. So we've got this great group of volunteers that are planning to be out there. They're going to be two at a time, two scheduled. Right now, they're just going to stop vehicles as they're coming in and look for stickers. If people give them a hard time, that's unfortunate, they're going to write down license plates, and we will be reporting those people to the police. They are not going to be made to be constables or anything like that. And they're hoping maybe two weeks, big push, and then we're thinking we're going to see a drop off of people that shouldn't be there, because now they'll be very aware that we're checking for the stickers. So there are quite a few exceptions to the stickers, and the town clerk has worked those all out. You know, if you are a caregiver in town, you're taking a resident's garbage, and there's things like that. So if you're watching this, please be aware that we do know that some exceptions have to be made, and those people will be sent to the town clerk's office to work out with the town clerk to get your pa, either a pass for your car, a temporary two-week pass or something like that. So, but yeah, so we want to see all the stickers displayed on the driver's side windshield. And again, they expire the end of this year, so then we'll be getting new stickers in January. And instead of two stickers, which now we have a park sticker and a transfer station sticker, we'll only have one. It'll be orange, it'll be for all the parks and the transfer station, so. They've also been investigating other issues up there, and they're going to be preparing a letter for the Board of Selectmen, some of the recommendations, or come to a meeting. One of them is maybe reducing the hours at the transfer station or changing the hours. So that might be proposed, but right now, their focus is this enforcement. So if anyone would like to help, please reach out to me, I'll get you in touch with the chairperson of that committee. But again, they're going to do two people at a time, just for safety and for, you know, in case it gets busy. And our transfer station staff will also be up there, but they'll be doing their job. So our transfer station committee people will just be helping them, you know, and doing the enforcement. All right, so town vehicles. So I talked to Phil Shaler down the street here, had done the nice design for the Deep River ambulance, and he had mentioned that a while ago. So he is just tweaking the town seal, and then the town vehicles will go in, probably one at a time, if they can, I don't know how long it takes. But the goal is now October 15th for the town vehicles. Eric thought that was a reasonable goal, and again, we.
That's a DPW, uh, DPW. Vehicles, not the police cars.
Well, the police cars, we had told Steve October 1st. So Steve has now told me he can't meet that deadline, so we will see.
It's great, Carol.
Now, will the. Yeah.
I mean, no. WPCA?
WPCA, be marking theirs also? I mean, we don't have control over that, but are they going to be marking theirs?
Well, we've asked them to. I, I don't know.
We could bring that up at the next board meeting.
That's a great idea.
Or if you want, I'd be happy to send a note ahead of time, Carol, you could send we would like it on the agenda for the next board meeting, which is.
First Monday of October?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so new town ordinances. So since we've, this administration's been in office, we've had several residents come in about blighted properties in their neighborhoods, and it's increasingly frustrating that I've met with zoning, I've called, you know, the Board of Health, you know, CRAD, we've called the DEP about different properties, abandoned cars, oil leaking into the, you know, failed septics. We've tried all these different approaches, and it just seems like a lot of our zoning regs don't have teeth right now to, you know, go after these people. And go after these people, and I don't mean in a, you know, it's just to get them to start cleaning up their property. And if they need assistance, they should be reaching out, but it just seems like we do a lot of letter writing to show that they're in, you know, violation of our zoning, but there's not a lot of teeth to that. So we'd really like to consider a blight ordinance. And I did reach out to Tony, who's here for planning and zoning. And the other was the short-term rentals. So I thought these two new ordinances, we should bring back to the forefront and start working on the language so we can move them forward.
I support it.
We've talked about it.
Do we know if Chester and Essex have a blight ordinance?
I believe.
To, no sense in reinventing a wheel if our neighbors have one.
Right, and they do have the short-term rental, so we wouldn't have to do that.
But that's a short term.
The blight is different.
Can I come up? Just a, I got a list.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
You said you'd be here.
I said I would be here, but I didn't know how this part was going to play out. So can I just yammer away, and then you get some, okay. So, so Clinton is a town that we do a lot of work in, and they have a blight ordinance. And so, sorry. So a lot of stuff they run into, there's a lot of positives to it, but there's also a lot of negatives. And some of the things you do want to watch out for, and not just take somebody else's ordinance, like if you took Clinton's, a lot of it includes people complaining about, you know, Bob didn't cut his grass. And you really run into a lot of that. So I've talked to John Gaskowski about this, he's from Tai Chi Blading, and they do tons of town in Connecticut. So a lot of the things that really want, and I've talked to Christine Nucci about this with Angus previously, but the consensus is basically, you do want a committee. You want your fire department, you want your health department, and just a person from each one, the police, social services, a zoning officer, and a building official. Because when somebody comes in and says, look, this, this person is, has a courting issue, it could also be somebody who's out there and can't maintain the property, which I'm not going to point out names, but there's a few of them in town. And so what you don't want to do is start fighting that person. You don't want to, like, here's $110 every week until you've been this property up, and they have no way of doing that, and then you end up leaving their property. And so, which is the reason you kind of want the committee. You want everybody to sit, every single one to sit down and go through that assessment. The other thing that they, Clinton ran into, and I think I've heard a lot about in town, is farms. Farms don't want any part of this. And so when we brainstormed about this last time, was, do you keep the blight ordinance east of Route 9? Because that's, basically, you're downtown, you're not affecting any farms because they're farther up, the wind's up. I'm trying to think what else is on there. And sidewalks. Sidewalks are a separate issue. However, you get into the people who don't maintain their properties, and there's a couple of them on Main Street where the trees and bushes and grass grows into the sidewalk, and then the town crew has to go up there and maintain that. Well, through Connecticut general statutes, sidewalks are yours to maintain. So if you're the homeowner and the sidewalk is in front of your property, it is yours to maintain. You're exempt from lawsuits, because it's still town property, but it's yours to maintain. And so you run into that issue where we're sending a town crew out there all the time to, you know, maintain these. So a lot of people said, well, give them a first pass, you do it the first time, and then say, hey, next time, if we have to come out here, we have to send you the bill for the services. So, anyway, and the last thing is, who enforces this? If it's the zoning enforcement officers, you guys already know, I mean, it's like pulling teeth to get more money for them to have more hours. So, but just issues and things I wanted to throw out there. I don't have the answer, but I don't think it's an easy choice. I personally think it's something we do need, because again, you, I mean, we've talked about this, there's, there's no teeth in zoning to do anything enforcement-wise with that.
So Tony, this is very helpful. So you're suggesting that we form a committee with relevant people.
Yeah.
You're also suggesting that we think about the issue of farms and think about enforcement. Are there any particular ordinances that you know of that would be good examples for us to look at and pattern?
I was going to ask John to send me the ones that are closest to the stuff we talked about, and I just ran out of time. So I will get that from him and email it to you guys.
And that's why I was saying, you know, get a boilerplate.
Yes.
And then we can tweak it to what our needs are.
Yeah. Clinton one is huge, and like, encompasses everything, you know, the grass is too tall, that flowers are too purple, I don't like your painting. So you have to watch.
That is one of the complaints that I've heard or issues with a blight ordinance is that then neighbors are turning on neighbors because somebody's grass is three inches, is not two inches or something. And we don't want it to be that picky or, you know, that specific, but.
We want to take care of problems like one we've had that's gone on for 10 years, and you've got safety issues and drug issues and.
Right.
Ground contamination issues, that's the sort of thing.
One up on Castle Heights that the ladies have called for several years, Castle Heights.
That's a good one to pick on. There's a few more, but.
I think we had about six, but now our resident here just gave us another one, so, yeah, you know, they're out there, and you're right, in some cases, it might be the homeowner just doesn't have the ability to go out and do that. And that's definitely something we want to take into consideration.
How can we help you move this forward?
Well, we could come up with, maybe at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we appoint a committee, and then we can, or do we want to do that now? I didn't have it on the agenda to do it now.
I'd like to think about, you mean to shape it up?
Yeah.
To shape up.
So do it next meeting. So do it next meeting?
Yeah.
Give it a little clock, gives a little time to-
And then, Tony, you're in favor of the short-term rentals, because we spoke about that months ago.
I am, and loosely, so I think I sent you guys-
Yes.
What Essex did. I mean, they, they had almost a year going through this, so I think this is pretty boilerplate. I, if it was my choice, I'd put it before the board and then just go through it and say, hey, look, there's a couple of things that you don't think that are right, but, I mean, they made this to death.
Well, I'd like to do that. Can zoning sort of start moving that forward?
I mean, this is all on you, but this is the board's election, but this is an ordinance, so.
Right, I mean, but you want to look at the language before-
Oh, we want us, okay. We have a, actually have a special meeting.
This is helpful.
Oh, yes, I saw that. Is that the, what he's talking about?
So we'd like PNC to weigh in on this specific ordinance?
On the content, and then we can move it forward because it has to go to a town vote, since it's an ordinance, so it would have to get approved by the town attorney prior to that, so there are some steps there that we have to take.
Is there any other input we need? Do we need to talk to a couple of people doing the short-term rentals?
Well, we might, after we get the language that we like, then maybe we have a couple of public hearings or at least one public meeting where some of our short-term rental owners could come and weigh in. I'm sure they'll have some good input. Thank you, Tony.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll put that on the agenda for the next time. All right, number 10 was Deep River Day, and I just wanted to give a big shout out to everyone that was involved with Deep River Day. It was really well done. Park and Rec did a great job. All the local committees and organizations that participated just did a wonderful job. The fireworks, again, thank you to the sponsors. And then the 5K, we had quite a few sponsors, and I will write them in the newsletter because there was, it filled up the back of the shirt, so I don't want to list them all. But again, it was just a wonderful day, so thank you to all, and kudos to Park and Rec for putting all that work in, so. Any comments? No? All right, our second audience of citizens, number 11. Jerry?
A couple of things. One, I'll be calling you in the next couple of days to schedule some meetings. The, shit, we had a board meeting at the historical site the other night, and a big echoing thing is how saddened everybody is to hear that we're not going to have a town newsletter, a quarterly magazine. You know, we've talked a lot of the project that I've been working on is a lot on trying to establish the town's identity, you know, because we're very conscious that we don't get the same credit that a lot of other towns get. I think, taken away, that piece is huge, it's the, it's the one universal spot where the town can read about what's going on in the town, what different organizations are doing, local people advertising it, so you see their, their names and their wall. I just think it would be sad to see that disappear because that's part of the town's identity to the, to the community, and it's the way that we as nonprofits can get our stories out to the community, and without that, I just, it would be even more isolated, all of us. So that's just my thought, and you can give that from other folks on that one. And then real quicks on the blight thing, and I've mentioned it once or twice to other folks. I don't know what all the criteria is, but there are, I drive through the town every single day. I, I drive from my house on Mary Wall Lane to the high school every single day, so I go through all those roads. Now, there are houses that people have been doing construction projects to scatter them all to their house for four years, and construction materials everywhere. I thought construction has a element of, I would just add that to the consideration when you're talking about blight. That's it.
Okay, nobody online, have to question anyone else?
I have a question on the marking of the town vehicles. You mentioned that, that you're going to do the DPW as well as the police vehicles. How is that going to be done? What sort of process? Are they being painted? Are they being coated, or how is that going to be done?
I believe the, well, they might all be the same, kind of those big decals or whatever, they put them on that way.
You mean magnet?
No, it's painted on or-
Painted on.
Or stuck on, but it's not a magnet.
Okay. Thank you.
And the two different places are doing, one, the DPW trucks are going one place, and police cars are going to the other place. Okay, and now, no more comments? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I have just a couple of quick things to ask. It's hard to believe we're in the fall, and Christmas is right around the corner. I'm wondering if we might want to get a committee going to figure out the Christmas tree and the design of that. There was so much feedback last year that I, I think it might be a positive thing to have some more involvement in that suggestion.
I don't think we've ever had a committee to talk about a Christmas tree. I mean, I'm not against it. I don't want to let, I'm a Scrooge and say I'm against a Christmas tree.
You know what I'm thinking of, that some of the really talented visual people in town, and maybe it's the design committee, and I'm just thinking of a couple of great new merchants we have here who are into decor and design. It might be a good idea to bring us up a bit.
Okay.
No criticism about the last year's tree intent, and I'm just saying going forward, I, and I've had kind of a dozen earfuls on this, so suggestion there.
Yeah, usually Park and Rec would do the holiday stroll, light parade, and then literally just, when's the tree going up? Okay, someone's doing the tree. It was always, the tree's always donated and the lights, and so it's always been very nice.
So I'm thinking, you know, particularly since we're missing our Park and Rec director, that this might be helpful.
Okay.
And then I was just wondering, are we going to go on site to see the walk at the nest that Bill Ferguson asked last time?
Yeah, I, Tony, you'll have to give me your-
Yeah, I respond to them. Just throw out some dates?
Yeah, I responded to them directly, and I think the ball's kind of in his-
It's in his court?
Okay.
I said, just, you know, give me a couple of days' notice.
Yeah, I think we all said, sure, tell us when, kind of thing, so.
One last thing to be thinking about is, I attended part of a planning and zoning meeting last week, and then there was a fair amount of public input about something that hasn't even been presented yet to planning and zoning. And, but a fair amount of discussion happened before the meeting, during the meeting, and then after the meeting about affordable housing and Deep Rivers' plan for that. And I actually went back and took a quick look at the plan that was put together by John Gaskowski and River Cogs under their template, and I'm wondering if it's time for us to have an update on that. A number of the activities that we put in the plan, because I think it's about two years old now, were for planning and zoning to do, some were for us to do. I just think it might be good, maybe we have a special meeting on that and go over it and figure out what we, where, where should we be and what do we need to do next?
So I actually attended a regional housing committee, committee meeting today, River Cog, and they want all the feedback from the members by early October. They're going to put together the plan, the regional plan, so I think that would be something maybe at the, one of the next board of selection meetings we can report on to and discuss.
So, so that'd be good, so I mean, just thinking not to put Tony on the spot because he's here and he's head of a, chair of a committee, but they had half a dozen things, maybe eight, that they were supposed, they, it's on their plate to do, so.
Well, we have a planning and zoning member that attends the regional, Dan Smith was there today as the Deep River representative, so.
So I'm not clear, so what are we, what are we doing on this? We're going to wait for River Cog in October?
Well, I think River Cog is working with all the towns, the 17 towns, and they, their deadline is early October, is what they announced today. Do you have anything to add to that, Tony?
I was gonna, I was gonna add, we just finished our, the town's affordable housing plan, did that last year or the year 2022? And so, I mean, we probably should have taken another look at that, but I think what Katie's trying to get at is, what we talked about at planning and zoning was having the town look at a couple of spots where maybe they could, you know, pitch and tell, this is where we think something A3G could fit, some, something affordable, that we're not, I hate to pick on Chester, but Chester had that come through, everybody lost their mind. So if the town sits down and picks out a couple of spots and has some meetings about that, maybe, is that what you're kind of doing for-
Actually, it's both things. I actually went back and looked at that plan, and I don't know, we must have had 20 recommendations, and some, some that were supposed to be done by the, by the office here of notifying, and I think we've done a couple of them actually when I looked at it, getting the special mortgage rates and the information on affordable dwelling units, we did that, but then there's a whole series of other things, and I don't know where we stand on it, and I just think it'd be great for us, and kind of it's part of our duty, to look at this and move something forward, so maybe we just need a meeting and update in addition to what you're doing with River Cog.
Well, River Cog, so what they're doing is they're coming up with the population of the town, the number of units required, those kind of things, so that we can come up with our, a couple areas in our town, and then we'd know what would fit our, our needs. We'd need, you know, five units or something like that, or 20 units, maybe, you know, because obviously we're not going to need as many units as Cromwell or one of the bigger towns. So I think all of this is tied together, and it's a great idea to-
Take another look.
Take another look at it. I was just saying that once River Cog has worked in all the numbers, then we'll have that more specific information to add, that this is what we're looking at for our town, our needs based on our population and number of units, number of dwellings, dwellers per unit, and there was a lot of calculation, and then projecting that to future growth,
and conceptual is probably something we should be looking at on a quarterly basis, just checking progress against it. I know we all need another meeting, but I think-
We don't have enough, we've got two more.
This would be good. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, do we have anything else?
Do you want a motion?
I don't have a time. 7:12, okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Okay, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion.
Good evening, everyone. I call to order, Deep River, regular board of finance meeting for the September 2024. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We've got a lot of work out of us. We've had two joint meetings with the selectmen. September 3rd, where we actually decided what was to go to ARPA monies, where to go to the town. August 8th, no, I guess I haven't read that one wrong. August 8th was the ARPA, August, September 2nd was where we sent the fire department, new fire department to referendum. And we had a July 23rd, 2024, our regular meeting where we ironically talked about those things and, and OSHA. So, does, how, would anyone like to proceed? Do you wish to proceed, approve each one separately or all together?
All together.
All together, I have motion one. I have a, I assume that is a second there, the nine. Anyone wish to discuss it? All those in favor approving all, three minutes, and gross, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it is done. All right, third item, audience of citizens. Any citizens wish to share? Thank you, citizens. Tommy, treasurer's report.
Okay, thanks. Everyone has the most recent report in front of you. I did, we didn't have a meeting in, in August, but I did do a report, and thank you for sending that out to everyone. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at that one, too. Just a couple of things, if you look at the general fund accounts, you'll see that our Citizens Bank has $1,313,000 in, in that account, pretty high. I made a million dollar transfer yesterday into that account, the reason being that we have a, a large check, a monthly check for the schools that has to, has to go out, it's $675,000, so that's really why that is, is so high. Number two, everyone knows that the Federal Reserve actually lowered their interest rates by 50 basis points. Great for mortgage holders and great for, if you have, got credit cards, but not so great for deposit accounts. You know, Guilford Savings Bank actually did decrease, decrease their rate, and you'll see that on here, it's went from the 5% down to 4.6, 4.65. That's the annual percentage rate on that. I have been in touch with Heidi Samuelson, who handles municipal accounts with Guilford Savings Bank, so to see if she can do anything maybe to up that rate back up to, up to 5%, but that's the reason, you'll probably see that happening now with, you know, banks because of the, that rate reduction and the Federal, Federal Reserve did. The capital improvements borrow account, you'll see on here, too, that the balance now is 543,119. There was, during the last couple of months, for the, for the 8/26 report, there weren't any disbursements on that account, however, we did earn $1,936.25 in interest. But if you look at this report, actually for 9/23, there was disbursements that were made from that account, there was actually 200, around $218,000 that was dispersed from that, that account. So the balance is now down to 543,119.66. The original amount, if you remember, that was back on June 8th of 2022, when we actually borrowed monies from Dine Bank for $1,425, $1,425,000. So you'll see that, that is going, going downward as far as our balance goes. ARPA funds from July 22nd to September 23rd, from this report, there's been $52,347.18 that actually has been dispersed from the ARPA, ARPA funds. And so right now, you'll see the balance is 543,119.52. So, and I know that other checks, we've signed other checks that haven't cleared from that account, so that, that balance will continue to, to fall. Wire transfers, for the last two months, I've made six wire transfers. The one I just spoke to you about yesterday, that was transferred for $1 million, that came, that came from the Liberty Bank account into the Citizens, Citizens Bank general fund account. So there's been a total of the six wires of $8,350,000. Two of those were actually, one on July 31st from $4,250,000, and one on August 6th for $500,000. Those were actually from Citizens Bank to Liberty Bank. That's when actually we were getting, monies were coming, tax monies were coming in, so we were actually trying to get interest on, on those amount, that amount. And then the last, the last four wires, one was done on 8/12 for $1 million, one on 8/19 for $600,000, one on August 26th for $1 million, and one on September 23rd for $1 million. So those four were $3,600,000. They went from Liberty Bank to our Citizens Bank general fund account. The education equalization grant, ECS monies for fiscal year, this fiscal year from July 1st, 2024 to 6/30, 2025, we will have $1,676,105 that will be dispersed. That's $6,459, $59 more than last year. So it'll be dispersed in three installments. The first one will be August 31st, that's a quarter of that amount, so that'll be $419,026.25 that we'll receive. And then on January 31st, that will also be a quarter, same amount, and then on April 30th, we'll receive, April 30th, 2025, we'll receive one half of that money, or $838,052.50. Just regarding our upcoming bond issue payments, you know, we have six, six bonds, and I just wanted to, you know, review those really quickly, just to let you know when they're going to actually be maturing, because we have the sewer construction bond that has 19, 19 more payments remaining. That's the one that will actually mature the first. And then we have the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project, and we have, that was 40 years, and we have 32 payments, 32 more years to go on, on that one. The Kirtland River Street Sewer Project Expansion, that was also for 40 years, and we, we still have 32 years to go on, on that. The capital improvements borrow, we had, that was for 15, 15 years, we have 12 years left on that. Capital purchases, that was for 15 years, we have 14 years remaining on that. And then the energy upgrade, which was for the town hall, the library, and elementary school, that was for 10 years, and we have five years remaining, remaining on that. The two most recent for the payments due, that sewer construction bond, actually that is, again, that is due on a monthly basis, $16,914.76, which is due on the 30th of the month, and when that payment is made, our balance will be down to $316,086.99. And then the capital purchases, which is a Dine Bank, that was originally for- And then the Capital Purchases, which is a Dine Bank, that was originally for five hundred thousand, that the first payment, principal payment will be made on October fifteenth for thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, interest of fourteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that total payment is forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And when that, when that payment is made, you know, again, that will be the first payment, that, that principal payment that's, that's actually made on that, that account. So basically, I think that's it. Not sure if you have any questions?
Tell me my comment. Form of the question, which I will answer, potential answer. Looking at the amount of cash we had in September of twenty-three is higher than current. My answer, proposed answer is that's because it included capital improvement and ARPA funds, we think.
Yes, exactly right. Right.
On our sheet, we treat capital improvement borrow as part of the general fund, but yet we keep capital non-reoccurring fund separate. Is there a reason we treat the two of them separately? Shouldn't they be? They sort of sound the same.
Are you talking about placement on the report or should the accounts be merged?
They can't be merged.
Right.
That I know. The location on the report, because there's a general fund, should the capital improvement come out of general fund?
Probably.
Well, the reason for that, that is actually a, those are monies that were borrowed from loan, loan proceeds.
Yes, yes.
So that was a, you know.
Oh, yeah, follow that. Just these monies, the capital non-reoccurring, pretend monies the town approved that we spend on capital. They seem like, they both seem like funding capital. Just curious why they're treated separately, and I don't think it matters for their, place the report.
I, that's the way it's been, so certainly that could be changed if that's, you know, something that you feel should go into the general fund.
Gotcha, cool. All right. Anyone have any additional questions for?
Tom, on a yearly basis, what is our payment on those six bonds? Do you have a, like an average figure?
Yearly payment on those, well, some of them are, you know, some of them are just, we pay principal and then we pay semi, semi-annual interest on some of those. I can figure that out, Carmella, and I don't have it right.
Isn't it on the chart?
You should be a little on your financial.
About five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year.
That's, okay, that's, is that principal?
What is it, Anne Marie?
It's, so in the year twenty-four, twenty-five, it should be something around five hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Five hundred and eighty-four thousand to the six bonds yearly, about average.
And is it three hundred and fifty of that five eighty-four is WPCA?
Is that, is that principal or is that?
So.
Everything, okay. That, that figure that Anne Marie said, that's actually principal and interest on those six, on those six bonds.
So we're spending three hundred and fifty thousand roughly on sewer things and a little less than a, two hundred and fifty thousand, quarter of a million on other, just to put it in perspective.
I'm not, yes, because like we know that, we know with some confidence that sewer bonds are about three hundred and fifty.
Indeed.
I just have a question. Sorry, time went up. An employee just retired and I'm assuming she took a loan sum payment. How did that affect the pension fund?
For loan sum, I mean, it was taken from the pension fund. I haven't looked at those numbers to see exactly what they are. The distribution has taken a while, so it hasn't, as of last Thursday, I haven't been polled.
Okay, any idea what it could be?
It was about a hundred and forty-five.
That's, that's about right, yes. And we did make actually contributions into our pension, pension plans. That was, I think, last two, what, two months ago, I think?
Yeah, and in June.
Yes, so that was both the town employee pension and also the firefighters' pension fund. I have that here.
And then for employees that are still eligible to take the loan sum, that leaves four?
Well, there's, there's more than four.
But I don't think they're really long, were they long-term employees?
Everybody who is in that defined benefit plan is a long-term employee.
So it could be more than four?
It's certainly more than four.
Okay.
Yeah.
And worst case scenario, all of them could leave tomorrow if they want to do it, they don't have time.
Not quite all of them, all except for two, what I would say.
Any additional questions for Tom?
No.
Tom, can I just have a copy of your report? Since I'm doing the minutes, can you use your accent for me?
Yes, okay.
Okay, Carol, do you have things that the selectmen wish to share?
Well, I know we talked about a lot of things. I'm not really sure where to jump in. I mean, right now we're losing our drainage issue at Oak Ridge Drive. We agreed to take that out of contingency at the fur, at the beginning. And now the project with the contract we just signed was going to come out of the Highway Department. And so there was a concern and we had talked about using some of the surplus to put money back into the highway line because he was going to be down, the DPW budget was going to be down significantly. Some of the OSHA fines that we talked about last time and we put together, we voted to take them out of the individual departments, but now we're, some of the abatements are adding up to significant, like the new railing at the transfer station is going to cost about eighteen thousand dollars. We've got about a couple thousand of painting at the library and we have to have an asbestos containing materials survey done at the library and the town hall. And the one price I've gotten is about, about ten thousand to twelve thousand right now for one contract. The building inspector, our building official looked at, looked at the same paperwork and he thought by the time they finished taking the samples, it would be closer to twenty thousand to do that survey. Basically, they, they give you an allotment of samples and then they'll take more if they need to when they're on site. So there's kind of an open-ended, a little bit of how many samples that they'll take. So we're looking at maybe twelve thousand for the survey at the low side right now.
I'm sorry, what's the survey for?
That would be for asbestos-containing materials. So they'll look at, they'll go through the building and they'll look at, you know, plaster for pipe insulation, anything that they think is worthy of taking a sample. They're professionals, so they already know pretty much what's going to have asbestos. When you look at buildings of our age, you know, the library building is older than the town hall, we have an eighteen ninety-two building, so they'll be taking, you know, I mean, years ago, the plaster, the old plaster, of course, hair, but sometimes had asbestos fibers in there and they mixed it and, you know, that kind of thing. So, so basically, I was talking to Bud and just saying that when we do one of our surpluses, and I don't know if Anne Marie has that ready or if we'll report on it, but it's something we should consider making the transfer into, you know, going to the town, asking to transfer money and to cover some of these expenses for the abatement, so that paving can happen, stuff like that. Because right now we're really dipping into the DPW line quite a lot between the Oak Ridge Drive drainage and now the asbestos abate, I mean, not asbestos abatement, the abatement for the OSHA fines. And then another thing, we have these decorative lamp posts on Main Street and we've had three recently hit and the price to replace those is about seven thousand dollars apiece.
Chewy.
So if we want to do that, then where does that money come from? We're looking into a couple of local welders that maybe they can take kind of the skeleton of what we have left and weld it back together and a little black spray paint and make it look pretty good. So we are trying to investigate if there's a cheaper way to go, but, so just some of the expenses are coming in and they're really hitting that highway line. Seems to be the most proportionally off, you know, I mean, proportionally too, like too early for this time of year, you know, and we're only two, two months into the new fiscal year, so, so that would be a consideration I'd like the Board of Finance to talk about re, replenishing his budget line a little bit.
Will they hit by cars and motor vehicle actions?
They are, so I've been working with Steve to try to figure out if he can find the owner. I don't know, the one in the library might have been a hit and run, but that one, so the one at Dunkin' Donuts, the gentleman is willing to pay for it, but I have no, I don't think he thinks it's seven thousand dollars for the.
They know if they wipe out a telephone pole, their insurance company has to pay for the telephone.
Right, right. So we might recoup that, but in the meanwhile, we have to fund that money than if we're going to replace those three or four, so. So that was one thing I wanted to bring up and, I don't know, we talked about a lot the other day. What else?
Okay, well, let's take this one. Board of Finance, as Carol pointed out, we set fines, five thousand, four thousand, we sign it to the department that was the God fine, government, all right? Seems intuitive, doesn't have to be. The abatement, should they follow the fines and should they be assigned to each one of the departments that has had the fine? The numbers are getting large. Most of the numbers Carol just called out, we could deal with, we're allowed to deal with something up to twenty. We could create another line item, right? We should find a line item. This is the abatement for something, right? So that citizens would see it's going to cost us, using the example, eighteen thousand dollars to buy a, what did you call it, fence, a gate or something?
It's a railing, a moky waste.
Really, okay. At the moky waste, we could handle that. And we could keep each one of them, other than that twenty thousand dollar one, that one upset slightly. Each one of them, we could probably deal with as a board. Here's where I begin to get uncomfortable. These numbers are getting very big. Should we deal with them in total and say to the town, in total, here is the cost of abatements and ask the town to approve? Or should we deal with each one incrementally below twenty? Anyone have any thoughts?
I just, quick question if I may. Was the fence covered in the ARPA funds in the ninety-one thousand?
Well, we did the upper fence and they, and they finished that today and they reinstalled it, the one directly to the right of the hopper. But the one down below has not been there for a number of years, if it ever was there. OSHA, she requires that it be there so people don't fall in. So it's quite long, you have to put it over all the boxes. DPW is going to look into trying to do it themselves, like, because they all, they do it on how to weld, but they were going to talk to two other local welders to see if, you know, they've only gotten one price, eighteen, but that is a local person that usually is on the lower side when they do get things costed some. Thank you.
Folks, what do you want to do with this? Stay with the individual departments?
I was against that last time based on lack of training and it's not in their job description. I thought that we should have just paid it and used it as a learning lesson. Now going back and taking more money out of their budgets, which we've cut, I don't think that's fair.
Excellent point, and that actually.
But then that means we don't remain consistent, because this board voted last time to take it out of their budgets.
Well, that was the fines versus the abatement, so, I mean.
It's a change if that's where the board wants to go, but yes.
No, I was just thinking, they're two different things, right? There might be pre-existing things in each department from before and the fines are to make people aware of, so moving forward, they can make it better, but the abatement part may be out of their control.
The fines also seem to be relatively fair per department because there were things like plug covers and distance from radiator's or minor stuff.
For sure.
Now this abatement is really severely corrective, looking for asbestos in walls and floors and pipe covers and so forth. That's, that brings in a whole different level of expenses.
It does, because if they, if they test your wall and they put a hole in it, they do not fix it. That's up to the sound fixer, typically.
And is there no questioning her report? I mean, if she's saying they have put holes in walls?
Well, she's not saying that. She's asking us to get an asbestos-containing materials survey, an ACM survey. So when the inspector comes out, if they want to sample the plaster, they will try to get like a non, you know, an area that doesn't show, you know, kind of something that's a little, but if they're sampling in this room, I mean, they're going to put a hole somewhere that will have to be fixed. And they usually will just scrape off a little, you know, but.
Are they doing that because there is an imminent danger from this building, from the walls, that there is asbestos in the walls? I must, let's, so there is, because this is such an old building. So is this an imminent hazard to people being here or is it?
No. So what they do is you, you take your samples, then you determine if there's asbestos material, then you come up with the operation plan for maintenance. So again, if we have somebody coming in who's going to cut a hole and put a new vent in or even somebody putting up pictures and it's going to put a hole in the wall, then maybe they have to have some sort of, you know, the, the maintenance plan will be there, like maybe you wear a mask while you're doing it, you know, and safety glasses. I mean, it's a lot of common sense things, but again, if we have asbestos tile in the selectman's office under the carpet and it's pretty obvious because we were missing a threshold, you can see the nine by nine of vinyl asbestos tile, that, we used to call it. So if I'm in there and I said, oh, I'm going to get new carpet in here and the, the guys come in and put the carpet in or ladies, you know, pulling it up, then we're disturbing the asbestos, so we have to be aware, we just have to take precautions. So if we don't take the precautions, then it might be an, an issue with our employees having exposure.
So there's a possibility of some very significant expenses that, to the town to address any concerns that OSHA finds or any, you know, mishaps that OSHA finds, and we have a lot of old buildings in our town.
We do, but again, it's, it's pretty standard, like schools were forced to do it by the federal government, to do all sorts of inspections, so that if any work was done, you would know that, oh, this is asbestos, so get an asbestos company in here, they contain it, and you do it correctly. So it's, you're going, you can't say ignorance is bliss, that's all. They, they want us to know what we have to deal with. Doesn't mean we're getting new carpet in the selectman's office, so we just need to know that it's there. You know, if somebody comes in to put a new radiator and has to drill a hole through the floor, well, okay, now we know it's there, that's all.
So the total cost for the OSHA abatement is twenty thousand for the asbestos testing, approximately an eighty thousand for the fence, so total thirty-eight thousand?
And they got a library painting.
Library painting, we've gotten one quoted, so.
I was, why does Bush have anything to do with painting the library?
Well, because the, in the kitchen of the library, there's flaking paint and that's where the employers were eating, so they had to close down the kitchen. Then they can continue to close down the kitchen as an abatement, but it's not practical because that's where they have their refrigerator and post, so the abatement there is to get the room ready.
So it's just one room?
It's just that.
Oh, so that's a couple thousand dollars. All right, so we're talking maybe about forty thousand? I was just thinking for your question, how much total are we talking about?
For the library?
No, for everything.
All buildings, yeah.
No, so what prompted her, the OSHA, is, one of the things with the asbestos is because the library was undergoing some minor renovations when she was over there, they were putting in their new circulation desk, which they got with ARPA funds, and that disturbed whatever was below the carpet, which might have been asbestos tile or something. So that's what made her think, since we didn't have any paperwork to tell us what materials we were dealing with, she said, you guys should do a survey, like it's just a smart thing to do.
And probably the door.
Right.
The door that's all ripped apart.
Right, yeah. So. Right, so the unknown is we don't know what the materials are and there should have been maybe a report done years ago, they had asbestos piping here in the basement that got abated back in the nineties. I remember reading about it. You know, it was air cell insulation, you know, nice pipe wrap and, so at that time, there should have been a report.
But if they find it, then it's been.
Yeah, and that was removed, but a lot of times.
Probably say they do a test here and now they go say, there's asbestos here. Obviously there's precautions, you want to drill a hole in the floor to put a radiator, but they won't say, now that it's identified, you should have it removed?
A lot of times that's where, where it is.
It is.
As far as the substance, you talk about the tile.
And the condition it's in. So if you have a friable where it can be airborne, that's more of a hazard than a non-friable thing like a, like the, the floor tile. It's really not an issue unless you really disturb it, crack it up or get, if she walked in and we had cracked. If she walked in and we had cracked tile, then obviously we have to address it, because that could be a problem. But it's already kind of encapsulated under carpet, so it's okay. But again, we have some that's exposed, because we're missing a threshold, so you can see it.
So what's our thoughts? Put it into associated departments, put it into the library, put it in the selectmen, or put it someplace and ask the town to approve all 40? Emory, where do you want it? Capital, or do you want it in the selectmen's line?
The majority is going to be capital.
But it is capital, except I like it up in the selectmen's, but okay, capital's fine. It'll get the attention it deserves. So we will address, we'll call that abatement? Well, the conversation is, we take what we assume to be the possibility of abatement, put it into capital, in total, which we will require the town to approve. As opposed to dealing with them one off at a time.
How is it capital? I mean, painting is not a capital...
Painting can be capital.
You know, lasts a long time.
In this case, it is. It's extending the useful life of the wall.
And certainly, once we go to fence gate, it's going to live for quite a while, so...
Yeah.
Well, now, keep in mind the abatement that we had done in the basement, because the morgue, not taking out of the selectman's line to date. That's about, what did we report? 38,000 for the cleanup. Then we had shredding and the storage of the pot. So I reported that our last board of selectmen, so maybe 39,000, 40,000?
10 or 40,000.
So right now, that's coming out of the selectmen, the town hall repairs line?
Town buildings.
Town buildings. So that might be something that I'm going to be looking for more money to come back in that. So again, we've stepped it down so quickly and we're only in, not even in October, so if anything else comes up, we're going to need to refurbish that line.
You could make a claim that we sit into town buildings, repair all of this, and then we just refurbish that account.
I think, and that's what we've been doing, taking it out of that account, just to get it moved.
Another 40,000, I don't know, I don't know what to say.
You're still going to have to explain to the town why you refurbished that account.
Yes.
And see, obviously, we took it out to deal with it, and now we're here asking for replenishment for a reason. Conversation to the same. But that coming out, I like town, this is how much it's going to cost to rebuild it, as opposed to a gate. Sorry, someone tried to gate, oh, I can't remember where. Gate costs this amount, painting costs this amount, and take each one of the... Which I think as a board, we should be able to deal with, but just doesn't seem to meet what our obligations disclose. Thoughts on it most far? Is 40 a good number? Do you want more time to collect numbers, to make sure that is a good number?
I think so.
Maybe need more time?
I think we need a little bit more time.
Okay. So that's coming down the next...
Could we do everything but your study, and put the study into next year's capital? How eager, no.
The study has to be...
Take the word eager out. How is it required?
Yeah, it's required by December. It was required by September 17th or something, and then we said that wasn't realistic, because I couldn't get answers back from a couple of the firms that I reached out to.
So it has to be, is there a date, certain has to be done?
Yes, the date for all the abatements, she gave a date for each of the abatements. Like, the railing has to be done by, I think, October 2nd or something, or October 15th. We got it, it was though, it was in December, but there were a couple, there were quite a few that were September 17th at first deadline. A lot of those were like the exit signs, the quicker fixes, but...
No, the fence that we're putting up, the plan for the transfer station, that doesn't impact it. So like, we're putting up something, then we're maybe taking it down in a year?
I don't think so, because I talked to Eric about that. I think, whatever the railing is, if we move the bulky waste receptacles, the railing, we're going to put it where it's kind of in some sort of sleeve that it would, they could slide it out if they need to relocate the, you know... So that was a thought too, of let's make it so it can be moved. And then I think each of the sections, it ends up being, I think, 19 feet long or something, and they're going to have sections where they can, in case somebody backs into one and bends it or something like that, they'll be able to replace a section.
So, in certain items have to be done in October, and we have just agreed that we need more time to get what that number is and go to the town. We're not going to meet it October 2.
It's true, is the railing on October 2?
I haven't actually seen the list of the deadlines. I just feel like I have copybooks in my pocket. I've heard some discussions about some other things, like, wasn't there something about chains?
Yes, the chains for the highway department.
Right.
Yeah, the chains, that'd be like re...
Aren't tagged.
Retagged, yeah.
I thought most of the highway department things were on October days, which seemed far off when they were sitting in that meeting.
But these things can temporarily come out of the highway department's budget.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking, they should come out of a proposal, they come out of the highway department's budget, and once we become comfortable with what the final numbers, we then go to the town and ask for the ability to reimburse.
Yeah, that's the plan. Because that's what we talked about, taking on the highway. I just wanted to get the discussion going, because again, he, the DPW was a little nervous about his paving line with all these other things coming out of his line now, looking into the fall, you know, to see what he can do.
All right, Gordon, we've reached, we're all nodding in the same direction. There are obligations to mitigate the problems that were found by OSHA. We will proceed to incur those costs and collect them, once we get comfortable, not on what that collection is. We will then come back, add them on, and go to the town and ask for those dollars, and we'll get them back. That word we're nodding, people want to bring up?
So, to clarify, they're going to start doing projects with a charge to hung works without town approval until we have an absolute number, and then we have a town meeting.
Correct.
So kind of the current board is going to be done with a choice.
I can't, I'm uncomfortable with this horse now, which is an absolute, what other choice do we have? I have very, including painting, it's going to get done. What's your painting going to get done, the library?
Can they do what, the roads or?
No, the wall, the walls, they...
That has to be done, I believe, by mid-October, I suppose.
So that's that October date?
One quote, I guess, the guy just stopped off today, gentlemen, and waiting on one other painter that Pete Wass had recommended from the school.
Okay.
So, he's already been there, he just hasn't given me the piece of paper yet with the quote on it.
We're trying to get painting done, my also sucks up.
My god.
How it's fixed.
So they do not schedule a meeting and like, do something like up to, say, 50,000, or something that makes you comfortable? So we're getting approval to do it before we've done it all?
To the town, you mean, to the town? I have no problem with that.
That's a good approach.
Other than, you'll never get, you'll never be able to get to the town meeting.
Yeah, but at least you're starting with your house and going to the town at the same time, so we're not doing it in November or December. And say, oh, by the way, all the work's been done, and now we're asking?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Well, the work has to be done.
Right.
So in that argument, you say, yeah, the work's been done, because it had to be done, but we're asking you to approve us putting money back in, so that these departments can function the way they play.
You guess what worries, and what? They both know.
Well, then, everybody has to limp along with, I have enough to my budget. I mean, we can't not do the work.
Right.
So I notice the fines, which would be, would be what, daily, right? If we don't do the work.
So I'm still confused over this. OSHA's telling us we have approximately $40,000 worth of repairs that need to... No, that's for the survey, for them to find things that need to be repaired. Is that correct?
No, so OSHA, in her inspection, she found things that we need to abate, which correct. And so one of the things she requires is that we do the asbestos survey.
Plus the railing and the transfer station.
Right. But it doesn't, like, if the survey tells us where our asbestos containing materials are, at this point, we don't have any projects planned that have to abate any of that asbestos, so we're only looking for money for the survey. And then moving ahead, if we have a big renovation or something, we know how to address that potential material.
And this was not something we planned on in last year's budget, this year's budget?
No.
And so if we get approval to spend this, if we spend this money, then we're going to go to the town to have them approve us spending this money, and then we're going to go to them and tell them we need to have line items replenished? So where is that, where is that money going to come from?
Well, let's do it again. Are we going to have the town, the departments do this now, or do Jackie, oh, Jackie's going to go to the town and spend the money, so we'll do it next one?
I mean, if we're required to the town for approval.
And so that would create a capital line item, all right? But pending upon the time, the sequence of those two, we may have to go to a town budget, a town line item, to begin the expenses. And then we will reimburse that, or you, doesn't seem that complicated, but okay, yes.
Or we may, we may park the expense somewhere in DPW for right now, once it's approved by the town, we would transfer it down to that capital one.
Correct. Now, Carmelo, as I answer your question, I mean, so we need to go down 40 or Jackie's 50?
So in order to replenish money, we're going to be moving money around from other places where it's not going to spend?
My assumption is we will be taking it out of surplus.
Surplus.
As opposed to taking it out of, we could take it out of, but seems to me we're so early in the year to start pointing out other line items. It seems a bit pretentious.
So I'm a little confused. I thought we approved to take $42,000 out of the highway department paving fund to pay for Oak Ridge Drive, and then we're...
Certainly not, that's what I, it's going to be initially paid for.
So now we're going to ask for another 40,000. So ultimately, it's 82,000, correct?
Whether the numbers are correct, if you got a concept.
Or more.
Or more, or more, right, but I just, we're throwing around 40,000, 40,000.
We've already got some.
Correct, and that's all that I'm just, because now, you know, you're looking at the line there, and you know, there's a, I don't know, 190,000. I mean, we'll deplete that line pretty quick.
What you're, yes, Eric, you can say, I mean, that's not sure all comes out of the highway department. Is that more to your question?
No, I just...
Library's coming out of the library, asbestos coming out of town hall buildings. Comes out of a lot of funds. Look, Jackie's thought we're going to get approval for, going on with 50,000.
But I just said 102.
It all came out of that line.
Well, if we do the four lampposts, it's 28,000 and 18, so that is essentially 40 more out of highway, plus the Oak Ridge Drive.
And that's, that's all that I...
Yeah, yeah.
Clarification, that's all. All right, let's do it again.
Are we adding money to the OSHA numbers to replace the lampposts now?
Well, if we, if we want to approve fixing the lampposts.
So we have 20 for asbestos, 18 for the fences, 12 for my...
Sure.
That's 40, plus 28 for the fences? The posts?
Yes.
So that gets us to 68, as we're talking.
Oak Ridge Drive.
And that's another 40, or more? 42.
42.
So that's 68 and 42.
110.
Yeah.
But we're thinking that the asbestos survey can come out of town hall repairs.
Yep.
There's still some room in there, probably. Oh, there's not much, though, it's only 10.
13.
So I just, the question is, does 110 come out of surplus?
Where else would it come? Now, surplus is a vague term for this meeting. Certainly, we have unassigned surplus. Emory, I will guide you through where we think we're going to end last year's budget, and we will generate surplus there, so we got several surpluses to chat about. But yes, if it's not the budget, it's got to come out of some surplus.
So you're not concerned about this unbudgeted expense?
What other choice do you have? I said surplus is for, to handle surprises. And I think we will generate surpluses, surprising surplus in last year's budget, which accidentally seems to be exactly into the area of the dollar amounts we're talking about. Yeah, but wouldn't it be nice if we didn't have all these things, but it's the light we read.
So there's only, I'm like, unrelated to this, but there's four lampposts, $28,000 that need to be repaired?
Oh, I thought there were two lampposts, there are four of them?
There's four, if we choose to repair them. I mean, we're looking into having like a local welder, and we can put him together, as Mike said, where if they, you know, we know who hit them, maybe there's an insurance claim, and we can get readers. But if we fund them to get them done, so that we put our main street back together, that's 28,000.
So we only know one person who's come forward to say he hit one. The other three are...
And Steve, I think, mentioned that he knew who hit one of them or something, but I only know the person that hit the deck of diamonds.
So you could have two paid for.
And the other two we have known, Dan, when they got here?
I don't know exactly all the details on the evidence, I just know there's four that need to be repaired. We got a quote, because they are kind of hard to, you know, they're not made anymore, you know, those kind of things, so it's like a special order.
I remember we got two proposals, one mine, which I don't care for. It would just, to get started, we'd replace it after everybody's getting done, add it all up somewhere, and then go to the town and ask for authority to move those dollars out of surplus. Item two, Jackie's, which makes far more sense, except we just don't know what the number is. Go to the town, simultaneously the work we're doing, ask the town to approve. Catherine's number is an excellent number. What did you, which...
It comes up to 110,000, including the lamps. You've got Oak Ridge, you've got OSHA abatement, you've got the lamps, 110, so maybe you ask them to approve up to 115,000.
Okay. That sounds far more impressive if you were a resident. Allow me to spend up to the following amount. We'll take it out of whatever we have to take, and we'll run it in parallel. It's just, the stories I'm hearing, we just don't have much confidence in those numbers, but that sounds like the right one to do. What do you want to do again? Sounds better, sounds more professional. Any thoughts?
We owe it to the town.
Oh, we do. What, do we owe it to the town to wait? Do we have the number, or do we owe, or just, we're doing the right thing, and this is the best estimates we have at the moment?
The latter, what you just said.
Okay. I have no problem with that. Board of Finance, is that comfortable?
Just kiss her hand inside the Oak Ridge?
I get it done, whether there's only...
He was going to be here tonight, but he didn't want, he couldn't come until he has some things straightened out with the selectmen, so... Let's assume, yes, there's got to be an...
Well, I hope, I hope there's an end inside with Oak Ridge, and it feels like it's this slow bleed that keeps taking, you know, more money, more money, and I know there's a responsibility that we've agreed upon, but it just seems to be getting to be outrageous.
And when we get to the budget, the pumps are in the contingency. There's no word on whether we will own those pumps sooner or not, right?
I thought we agreed that we would own those pumps.
Yeah.
ARPA ones, we said that, but I don't think there's any momentum on buying those pumps at the moment, right?
I asked Eric, and I don't think I got the answer, but actually...
We're going to check to see if the money we paid to Lisa or whatever, we could put that towards buying them, right?
In the meantime, we're paying a rental fee for Mike, right?
Yes.
Would love to see that taken care of expeditiously, you know?
Yes.
Well, the thought was to put whatever we had rented towards the purchase, so there was also a thought that if we, if we were renting, then we're just putting that much more money towards the purchase, so then the purchase price is less.
So maybe it's under the assumption that we are going to be afforded the opportunity to put that money towards the, and if they say no, then we're out still, the rental money. So I'd love to, I'd love to see that taken care of.
Sweet. Sweet. But we don't know the status of those conversations yet.
We do not know the status of those conversations, and just another, and I don't know if this is possible, but is there any way, I know we agreed upon ARPA funds to be spent in a certain manner over at the transfer station, but can it be, any of that be into consideration for the 18,000 with the fence? Maybe one less dumpster, or just for the sake of conversation?
Well, we spelled out kind of in, not in exact detail, in general, we did not include the rail, so I don't know. It was general upgrades, so that is a consideration. I'll have to look at how that approval was worded.
Yeah, just curious, because I think there was some generalities there for bulky waste, and if that would be included if we're moving it, and then it's an upgrade, and it could be included, and maybe the ARPA funds... be included in maybe the ARPA funds that we've already moved over there, instead of having to, not to confuse the issue part.
Well, if we go to the town and ask for the 115 to move, and then we don't need the 115, then if we just move, you know, up to 115, is that how we phrase it?
Yes.
And then if, if we can use the, for the 18, then we're just not, we're going to take, you know, 96 or whatever, 97, instead of 115.
And if we can get insurance companies to cut a wet post, that's another.
Right, so we're just trying to get up to, and then whatever we can spend.
Yeah, the insurance company won't call us and say, hey, you want this money? That's for sure. So I'd love to see if there's police reports or those, just connecting the dots, is all.
Okay, all good. Board of Finance, we need a resolution. Go to the town and ask the town for?
Two.
Well, we want to ask the town for 115, but we want to ask for three different projects. ARPA remediation.
OSHA.
Repair, OSHA, thank you. You don't need to repair, thank you very much. If you didn't get a kick out of it, thank you very much. Taking all my initials, getting told to remember all my initials. All right, my OSHA remediation.
63 Oak Ridge.
How much?
Give it.
Oak Ridge?
42,000 for 63.
For the, how much for my, for the lights? 28?
28.
28, and how much for Oak Ridge?
42.
42.
42, okay.
42 is Oak Ridge? Yes, so it's 40 for OSHA.
No, we need more for OSHA.
28 for light posts.
That 42 is just.
The cost of labor for Oak Ridge, there's another 28 and 22.
That's not the number of those, there's seven.
The materials. The materials, that's the concrete for the layers.
And we're ignoring cost, because we have some expectation we can buy the.
How soon, well, we know about answers.
I'll ask Eric again tomorrow. I did ask him, and maybe he answered, and I didn't, I can't remember what he said.
So maybe what we want to do is decide to take this to the town, and have them refine the numbers before it goes to the town.
Oh, you're going back on your, do you want to refine it?
Well, because we just, what you do is 42 for Oak Ridge for labor, but there's all the materials. I was not remembering top of mind what the word.
I think it was 20 to 22. 20 to 22.
Yes, it was close to that. It was like, I'd be sorry.
Okay, yes, there's work to make. We've got two proposals. My vague proposal, that we take it out, collect the number, that's mine. Jackie's, which I think is more logical, is we get a number, ask the town, can we spend it? Where are you on those?
Yes, I'm saying that, but we need another 12 hours till you get the number.
Ah, okay.
Unless we keep her here all night.
You just want to add a number.
Please don't.
I think that's better.
I would, I would just add 28 to that.
Add 28, so it's 138?
So 42 and 28, so.
70.
70 for Oak Ridge. How much for OSHA?
40.
With the same 40, you made it 50.
50. I thought we added in a buffer.
So let's start with, we've got the asbestos abatement, the fence, and the painting that comes to 40 for OSHA. And you want an extra 10 buffer for OSHA?
Yes.
Yes, so it's 50,000 for OSHA, 70 for Oak Ridge, and 28 for lights.
Give yourself a contingency, which round will a contingency, what number?
It's 148,000.
So should we do 150?
150.
And just because we're being recorded, it's OSHA asbestos containing material survey, not asbestos abatement.
Yes, OSHA asbestos.
This is a, it's a watch, we're taking the.
Well, the 50,000 for OSHA is for all of the, of the, well, it's corrective action plan.
The corrective action, yeah, could be abatement for the OSHA.
Good point, good point.
Just didn't want people to get nervous that we're watching.
All right, Board of Finance, somebody's got to step up, put their name on the first, second. We wish to take to the town relatively immediately, a request for $150,000 to be taken out of unassigned surplus to cover all those things that Jackie just listed. Board of Finance, got a first, second?
Some move.
Some move, okay. And that will be going to the capital line item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second, got a second. All right, we got a first, we got a second. Anyone wish to discuss this in more detail? Here, no discussion. All those in favor, 100, moving $150,000, request to the town, please say a aye. All those opposed? All right. Carol, did you have any other item on your agenda? That's a big one, took us a while.
It's just, I'm sorry, before we move on, just in the meantime, you'll check with Eric to try to get an answer, give away some clarity, and then Steve with tracking, get that over the line.
Yes, absolutely. I, that was just sort of a worst case scenario when I got the.
No, I'll figure it out.
Carol, are you done? Asking for?
Asking for what?
So, Carol, I have one, since it was brought up earlier. So the cars are all going to be labeled, do we have a price for that now that you've got the design and all that?
I, I don't. I know we approved for the police, I thought.
11,000, I thought.
Yeah, I think it was nine, we thought it was 950 a car or something like that, so.
So it's all within that budget?
It's all.
Okay.
Can we just interject for a moment? I know we just said 150,000. Dwayne and I think we need to look back at all the Oak Ridge funds, just to make sure that we've done this properly.
10,000 for remediation.
I thought we weren't remediating.
We'll give 10,000.
Before you agree to that, the spreadsheet that we had there, I thought was more than half.
He included a scenario for remediation on there, but I thought that we weren't doing. I could be wrong, I will.
See if you got that spreadsheet. I know I have it at home.
I haven't seen that spreadsheet updated since the agreements were signed.
Well, your discussions seem extremely thorough. Are you suggesting the number 150 along is too low?
It might be a little low.
Oh, might be too low? Oh, okay. I'm concerned, this board just said, voted, we're going to send 150, press for 150 to the town.
What was this, what was the?
We're saying that number's wrong? High, low? We can't change what you sent to the town, I have to just vote.
There are just a lot of variables, but there is, in that number right now, a $12,000 contingency for all, between all three projects, and that doesn't take into account, hopefully we will be reimbursed some money for some of the labels.
Right, so if we stick with the 150, but then not, and, and wait to publish legal notice of the, of the projects, and we can give you a more accurate Oak Ridge Drive figure.
The line in the sand with Oak Ridge, when do we say enough is enough?
Well, we just signed it for that, so.
That's the first thing to get back, we have to find out the ones that were.
That's because it's been so long since, yeah, we actually had this meetings about it, the contract was signed, and the piping has been delivered, and all these kind of things, so we're just, I think there was some mold remediation in the town that agreed to split some of the costs, you know, two-thirds or one-half, and this kind of thing, so. I think we agreed to bring in 10,000.
When is this request going to the town?
It's up to Carol from now on.
Sure. I mean, we'll, we'll do the legal notice, and you'll need what time.
Soon, like, a month?
You guys want to keep it in, we have to work back to it, because we're like 10 days left. If it goes to the Valley Courier, you have to get it in, you know.
So if you get it in this week?
It has to be done.
To get it in next week?
Have to be done.
It has to be done right away, right? Because otherwise you're going to. Right? We got to, we got to keep our deadline with OSHA, or else we get fined more.
And their deadline is December.
No, October.
Well, we can, we can ask to push back if we're waiting on money approval, I think that would be a legitimate ask, correct, for OSHA?
No matter what, we're going to have to right now, because.
But I can't guarantee that.
And if it's 10 days out.
What we could do, we could just go and have to do the asset duty money, and separate these into two things.
Well, right now, if they approved 150 over the town meeting, and then when we do the legal notice.
It's 10 days, that's right.
We can break it down, and then we can come up with the exact figure for the legal notice. So the Valley Courier, I don't know what the deadlines are, but of course, they only publish on Thursdays, and then you have to.
I think the sooner we do it, the better. So if you get it in this week, the Valley Courier, then that's Thursdays?
Yeah.
And how soon?
I think five days before the meeting.
Okay.
Weekends count.
Weekends count for me?
So it would be the following, if you get it in next Thursday's paper, not Thursday, then the meeting could be the following Tuesday or whatever. I don't, didn't get my phone, so.
I'm sorry, so what'd you say, how many days? Five days?
Five days.
So you could have as early as activity?
The issue is the 150 might not be enough, that's the issue now.
Yeah, it's going to, right, the 150's not.
I think, as Sam Ray pointed out, though, that there was already 12,000 contingency in that number, and then if we get some of the, like, if the railing can use, be used with ARPA funds, and that's 18 more that comes back.
Right, there is capital money already assigned to the library kitchen. Things like that. There are avenues.
It was like for appliances or something, but paint, we'll call paint appliances.
It says library kitchen.
That's okay. All right, okay. Well done, all right, folks.
All right, so we give a motion, it passed?
It passed.
It counts.
So it's, do it right away?
Okay.
All right, Carol, we have made all the recommendations and requested all the information, everything from us. If you are done, I'm going to use your time to have Anne Marie, I'm going to call Anne Marie, part of the selectmen's presentation. Anne Marie, you want to go with your partner or not?
Yes, so I apologize, everybody, I have been a little bit busy, as I think you're all aware, upstairs. Particularly Jackie is aware, thank you very much for all of your help.
Thank you, you're welcome.
So I took a pass at updating this only a few hours before this meeting. Going forward, I'll make a point of sitting down with Carol in advance, just so, you know, both of us can update respective items. So she did not get a chance to see this before I printed it, we just didn't have that kind of time available to us today. But I just wanted to update you on a few things, particularly the priority level one items. The purchasing policy, I have put together, at this point, more of a high-level draft of it, and I actually gave it to Bud to review, so that's on his list. And then, once he comes back to me with feedback, you know, I can distribute it to the broader group. The capital budget plan, I did provide a draft of that at the June Board of Finance meeting.
Go back to the first one?
Oh, yeah.
So do you think we can have it by October meeting? Is that possible?
The formal?
No, the draft. After you reviewed it, give it to the rest of us?
Actually, Anne Marie gave it to me a long time ago, it's my first.
Okay, sure. So let's put on here by October?
The budget plan, I did present a version of this back in the June meeting. I think, based on some changing requirements around our grants, we need to become much more serious about our capital plan, we need to have a formalized process, and it needs to be done in the 24, 25 year. I've already spoken with Eric, because he's one of the people who has more significant capital needs about, you know, not only discussing things like the payloader and vehicles, but also, his paving is considered capital, sidewalk repairs are considered capital. We don't have any sort of, from what I can tell in recent history, tracking of those kind of regular repairs and maintenance that would fall under capital. So we need to kind of come together as a team and really put together a comprehensive list of all that stuff, which might be a little threatening when we look at those dollar amounts, but more to come on that.
So what are we thinking now? Another month to look at this, two months? What are we thinking? If you want more input from us, or a special meeting work session on this?
I think we will have to get there. I think I need to have more direct conversations first with the fire department, police department, and Eric, and like I said, Eric and I have already talked about setting up a meeting to go through this. So maybe at the next Board of Finance meeting, we can discuss, you know, be it a subcommittee or, you know, whatever kind of working session we want to look at moving forward. Hopefully, once we get this document in place, it becomes a much easier task to just maintain it and, you know, think about similar projects we would need to do further out.
So what will we look at in a month's time, please?
I would try to put together just a raw data list, kind of like what we've seen in the past at budget time, from the various departments, except it's going to be a much deeper dive guided by myself, to kind of point out the things that people might think about as part of their regular budgeting process, but don't realize that they're necessarily
And it will be on the agenda, we can discuss it in a month's time. Sounds great.
Doing on interpreting, is part of the budget plan, is that what you intend to draw?
In a perfect world, what we can do is, you know, create our capital plan, which is a five-year outlook, and then in our normal budget process, we're taking that information right out of our capital plan, and we're including it in what we sent to the town to approve.
We used to actually approve a capital plan as part of the budget.
It's considered good practice. Telecom expense evaluation, I have not had time to tackle that one at all.
So this is something we'd probably want to have assessed, and maybe get a better number before we go into the budget process.
What, on the telephones or the?
Yes, the telecom expense.
When we look at last year's budget, you will see we're substantially over on telephone, so, yes.
I did talk to, I had a Zoom call, I think with Comcast, it was. I was going to do another on the Frontier, but.
Do we want a target November for that, is that reasonable, or December, or what makes sense? I think we should at least put a target for by when.
I'm just concerned about my bandwidth.
January?
I just don't know, I've got a lot on my plate right now.
I could try to call like Frontier or something, since I already have Comcast numbers. I think somebody will bundle every commercial, they tell you to bundle and save. Why don't you just bundle it?
The comprehensive review of property.
I just have to stop to, with all respect for that schedule, I'm uncomfortable leaving it blank, I don't care if we put Q2 25 on it, but I think we need a target. I don't, I.
But January.
So we're talking about the January meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday, so you have till the end of January is what we're thinking of. Okay, thank you.
Comprehensive review of property and casualty, casualty insurance. Carol and I sat down, and she recommended I touch base with Christopher Waltrip, I believe his name is, he is rather well-known in the municipal insurance space, and he, you know, agreed to look through all of our documents, and he said, you know, I have found, you know, quite a few things, I think I could save you quite a bit of money, and that's the service that he provides through his firm. After speaking with Carol about it, she and I, I don't really want to speak for her, but discussed hiring, maybe not him, we will have to put it out for, out to bid, but hiring an insurance broker who is regularly looking at things like our property evaluations, our deductibles, and figuring out the best balance of all those things. So it's something worth considering. I kind of hope she would be here to speak more to it.
So what's our target for this completion?
Should we raise the tariffs here next month? Is there a date on this one?
I think so.
Does the people take one if we talk about this? Yes. Or is it...
Yeah, and Carol also seemed pretty comfortable, you know, she's a little bit familiar, at least with Chris's rates, that he would save us more than he would be paying him.
Correct. Okay. That's the pressure. Okay.
Private tree contractor has been completed. The fleet policy, we do have a date on there, January 2025. So I have not yet begun to dig into that.
What was that? Anne Marie, I didn't understand the name of that. Private tree contractor utilization of town-owned property for storage of vehicles and equipment?
That was, was it Asplund?
Lucas Tree.
Lucas Tree was parking their vehicles on town.
They were sent a bill by the past law firm that they had moved their equipment.
Okay.
So I guess it's completed.
So when the bill was sent, was anything paid, or did he just move his equipment?
No, I just...
Is that gonna bump us down the priority list?
I thought we were told.
We also have a bill outstanding for them for about $20,000. But I don't know if they'll ever pay.
So you said, they were sent a bill for past parking?
No, that was for special police services. And when they cut the trees on the side of the road, and they have a police officer sit there, we bill them for that.
Well, so that's a bill we need to pay.
It's been sent multiple times.
Is it, is there a regular process for follow-up on when bills aren't paid?
They've gotten their second follow-up. Overview of the town's current bond rate and interest rates. I don't know if Bud and Tom have discussed that at all. Or if you want to put a date on it?
Before we move to that one, the first, this fleet policy to govern use of municipal-owned vehicles. I think Carol reported the letter is happening, did you say on October 15th?
No, that's for the IRS thing, so...
So the, so the lettering of the vehicles, so that first piece is happening, I believe, on October 15th. But then, the next one, use restrictions and tracking of mileage, gas, basic expenses. So that's the policy, and it's in process of being written, and will be targeted to be done by end of January.
It's targeted to be done by end of January, it's not in the process of being...
But the exciting part is the first piece is almost done. All right, so we have some progress.
Does that mean certain employees are refusing to take their cars home now?
No, that has, I don't know.
Police cars, I've been told that no one will take their cars home, except for the rest of the crew.
That's their choice, Brad, it's not mandated by the course level.
We have not rewritten the hiring of that position. Right now, they're allowed to take the cars.
But that'll be part of this policy, will it not? Town's current bond ratings, interest rates, what are we doing there?
Currently assigned to Tom and Bud.
We could do that anytime. We don't have a bond rating, but we can talk about the process.
We want to just number ones, or we want to go overall?
I can just do ones if you'd like, that's fine, it would definitely cut down on time. The pension fund, so Carol and I met again with Ivory Wealth Management to start the process of moving both our financial advisor over to them. And we are changing our record keeper from Empower to One America, which is fantastic news, based on my experience with our prior record keeper. I am having another meeting with them tomorrow. Right now, we're kind of in the information sharing phase, but their goal is to have us fully transitioned over to their platform by January 1st.
And that gives us time to make, let the public know about it, and not be...
Yes, and I've discussed that with them at length, you know, how I feel in, with our past vendors, there was no effort to build relationships with our employees. And, you know, I think everyone in this room is well-aware of how complicated navigating the retirement landscape can be. So they are committed to coming here, being physically present, and, you know, working with and helping anyone who needs it, so...
It was part of the selection process. Seems to me we spent a lot of money correctly for our employees, and it just sits there. They should get the advantage of having someone come and help them plan how it's used, how it fits together with everything. It just sits there.
The next priority number one is the assessment of incubator park property for foster zones.
Yeah, the select one, we have to talk about that. We'll do that at our special meeting this week, you want to throw it on there?
Sure.
Or is that too much?
It might be a lot with...
All right, so we'll do that the next week, so...
Maybe two weeks.
Next meeting? End of October?
October.
I think we'll have our, October then? Next quarter, by then? All right, so we'll set up...
That falls a lot on the realtor's.
Well, if you assess that, that will... Can we just decide what we're gonna do by then?
Yes.
Yeah, we can't do it by then.
Because we've been talking about it since January, so I think we can.
Okay.
A letter to ARPA awardees has been completed. Develop a plan to evaluate regionalization of the three tractant elementary schools.
I spoke to the superintendent today when I was up at a meeting, just at the end, saying, "We're all anxious to get that going," so he said he's gonna try to get a meeting scheduled.
All three towns are interested in it?
I think that would be, the meetings would bring out who is interested and who's not, so I don't want to speak to that until we have statements.
And the last one is a bit too speculative, but it's in process, should be done by January 1st.
Some of this other stuff is done, in the second priority, development of detailed costs for transfer station enhancements. I think we can say that's been completed, can we not? All right, so let's give ourselves a pair of the back then.
Is, are the results of some of these number ones, just because those are the ones we've talked about, how is that going to become a known entity? Is it going to be written someplace? Is it going to be just conversation among committees or boards, people present? How is it gonna be handled? For example, develop a formal purchasing policy. Does that have to be something written down, like, you're the head of traffic rule? These are the, the standards you have to meet, are these the outlines you have to follow?
So once it's finalized, I will circulate the document to everyone. This board will get a copy, all the department heads will get a copy. And in the case of the department heads who are, you know, handling regular purchasing for their departments, I would like to hold kind of an informational session with them as well. Somewhere where they can come and ask questions.
And the fleet policy to govern use of municipally-owned vehicles, is that going to be the same thing? Or is it gonna be a verbal, "okay, this is what you can do, this is what you can't do?"
Well, the financial pieces, I mean, I can certainly put into policy and answer any questions that they may have in regard to those things. But to me, that is probably gonna be a joint effort, because it's not purely financial.
Policies should be in writing.
Yeah, all policies will be in writing.
There's no missing information.
All right. It would be the sort of a thing the policy gets put in writing, if it's initially communicated. Perhaps Carol brings it up at one or two staff meetings that she has, and maybe does a quarterly check, or have semi-annual check to see that it's being enforced.
I think where you can, what you can...
Like tracking of mileage, gas, maintenance expenses, are those listings that we have, that we know that, you know, these three months, so-and-so's vehicle used 40 gallons of gas? We don't have that. That would be what the policy would be to perform.
I mean, a lot of this, most of this was done because of the discussion.
Right.
We can't... My voice is kind of starting to get, we didn't have that.
I think this was very helpful. Thank you. And Jackie, thanks for involving all of us to begin with.
You're welcome.
Your name's at the top, is she, huh?
What?
Your name's at the top?
Where?
Oh, you're helping me with the purchasing policy.
Well, it's down here, that's...
You're first line.
I think you did it right.
I have to read it exactly.
If we could include this at the next month's meeting and start looking, just discussing items of priority two, just to get some timeframes up, so we know ballparks of what we're looking at. They drifted for a while, we've done so much work, and we've done incredible amount of work, but...
Well, I think that was the goal of doing this, is every year at Budget Time, we would talk about all these things, and it's like, "Well, we can't do it now, so let's create this list, so we look at it longer before Budget Time, get the work done, and screen out every month, and just kind of quickly reveal it."
Yeah. We have made a good job, thank you.
I have a question, just, because I'm full of them tonight. With regard to the policy for the police department, and the vehicles, and the maybe quarterly meetings to ensure or check the mileage and that the policy's being followed, is there any possibility of creating, like, an ad hoc committee to help with the policies? Or look to the future of a police commission?
Well, I know the board is like when we talked about, like, a traffic committee at one point. And I did get some negative feedback from the police. They didn't want to have to answer to a committee, but I told them they weren't gonna answer to a committee, so...
I think your police accountability bill allows every town and city to establish a police commission, and that's the police accountability bill. And they have to work with the police committee that's formed. So it's not lingering discipline or anything like that, but it's just reviewing resources that are being utilized to the fullest, and stuff like that. So you push back what you want, but by law, you have to work with them.
Okay.
Maybe something you can look into?
I don't know how to push that forward. I mean, if anybody's interested in it, I think that it certainly ensures a bit more accountability, transparency for the townspeople, there's so much, yeah.
We might do a little research.
It's cumbersome.
I think you should have to do that.
Yes, then we can talk about it, be a little more educated on what you're proposing.
There's so much, it's just cumbersome with regard to police accountability thing, so it's awesome.
Okay. I appreciate that, if you could send it.
I would love to have conversations, I would certainly assist in any way.
All right, folks, the next item, more general, we were going to have Dick Leighton join us. He was going to talk about, I guess that's a kick out of his title, Status of Emergency Projects. But at least the memo I got today, he was not going to show up for this meeting, or for the select meeting, and, because he feels there's things he has to talk about privately with the selectmen, so we'll just be held in suspense. All right, next item. The, we will begin...
Before you do that.
Go ahead.
So it's the status of emergency projects in various stages of resolution. Didn't we just approve money to have them all divested?
Oh, well, I think that's his conversation. Certainly, the one that requires money, we were talking about, we moved it to the...
And we didn't talk at all about the town hall basement.
Oh.
Well, you want to talk, well, we approved the...
We don't know anything without Dick, so maybe that's some of...
Okay, so there are other things besides the three projects that we just talked about? Cedar swamp?
What's Cedar Swamp? We're not pumping in another house, please tell me.
There's a retaining wall that has issues, so we have to...
It's like being under a waterfall that never stops.
It's called a swamp for a reason. We shouldn't have hotels in it.
Okay, so, the next item is the, at our, what was it, September 3rd meeting, the selectmen sent to referendum November, will ask the question whether we should proceed with the firehouse and the purchase of new trucks. I have been, actually, it was implied in that, when we were sent to referendum, I would participate with the firehouse on their, on their public meetings. How many do they have planned? Is there other...
Six.
Six, is that the number?
Just some of the dates?
They're Thursdays.
Thursday is the first.
It's on the website, I think you, that's how you put it there. He's the first one, at the fire station.
Their evenings and then Saturdays.
Seven o'clock on Thursdays, nine...
Oh, it is, it's floral Thursdays?
Some have the architect...
Nine sixteen, or nine twenty-six. So it's Thursday evening...
Twenty-six at, what, seven?
7:00 PM. And then Saturday, nine twenty-eight at 9:00 AM. Thursday, 10:10 at 7:00 PM. Saturday, 10:12 at 9:00 AM. Thursday, 10:24 at 7:00 PM. Saturday, 10:26 at 9:00 AM. And the architect will be able to attend on 9:26 and 10:10, so those two first Thursdays.
Is that gonna be advertised anywhere in particular?
It was, it's the Valley Regional, Valley Courier article that came out this past week, and I think Carol put it in her newsletter.
Putting it in the newsletter, and then the fire department, I think, keeps putting it on their Facebook, so...
And I will tell, I will make a presentation saying the exact same things that we talked about at the, when we prepared for it.
On Thursday?
Now, here's the question. How many public meetings that you just announced? I'd be more than happy to share if anyone would like to participate. Would anyone like to co-participate, take over and make the presentation? I'm more than happy to share the space.
Well, I think if you did kind of a, you know, handout, like we talked about, some bullet items with numbers. Because I plan to go to as many as I can, but I cannot go to all of them, because I already have plans. We're down with my son on one of the days or something on that Saturday. But I'd be happy if, in the stead of a Board of Finance person. But if one of you can come, and you have kind of a cheat sheet for us, then I think we can have a number sentence.
And in addition, just a suggestion, what if you were videoed on the 26th, giving your presentation? I mean, they've got that great TV there that they turn to an ongoing thing. Because, Bud, there's nobody like you to give these numbers.
We have decided that's good or bad.
That's a great idea.
Well, that is interesting, that's good. That means they gotta get all dressed up, getting a haircut, that is exactly...
I'm looking at you, I'm in depth, but it's perfect.
You can still be enough to... You can create a YouTube channel.
I'll get my own YouTube channel.
Yes.
Exactly.
Use different accents.
Well, I asked Adam, I asked Adam what kind of presentation he's gonna have, so... But certainly all invited, and...
I think it should be a little bit more specific than, "we're invited," and if you could, I think, as Board of Finance members, and I think you are the one to best do the presentation, because you understand it, and understand the numbers infinitely better than the rest of us do. But I think it would be very supportive and informative for the rest of us, for one of us to be there with Bud at each of the meetings that you attend. And I, you guys are gonna, normally be interesting, is people may ask questions.
The 26th and the Saturday.
Privately, that anyone else could participate in.
And I think that's what the board's likely gonna do, too. We very, like, you know, if somebody can go one night, then they go and represent the board. But I like Catherine's idea, if you got yourself videoed.
So I'd be happy to call David Berardis and ask him if they could video you, or if they have, they have one person who does social media, even if we got you on an iPhone.
Should they videotape the entire meeting, or just the financial side?
Financial section. That's my suggestion.
But I don't think that should be in lieu of somebody being there from the Board of Finance to answer questions.
Right, because what if people have questions, they can ask a video?
Let it drop, you need a response, you know?
But only he'll be able to, only he'll be able to go into detail, because he knows the numbers best of the time.
We can do that overview, and then we could be there to... And there are one, two, three, four, five of us.
And see what days were available.
So one of us can make one of the meetings with him, I'm thinking, but...
Plus, it would be nice to hear what the townspeople are saying.
Right.
That they're attending these meetings, so...
Very true, it will be interesting. It's a courageous thing we're doing, I think, for the Board of Finance. Mike's, when it passes, it spikes for...
Mike's like, "Hope you like rock, herbs and tomatoes."
On the subject, can I just ask it?
Please.
So I sent an email to Carol and Bud, and then I think I forwarded it to a few other people. Is, on Saturday, I was talking to someone, and I'm not sure if I'm gonna get the wording right on this, but they were very knowledgeable about a couple of firehouses that were bonded at the state level, and by calling, by maybe reaching out to Norm Needleman to see if he would be willing to come to some of these sessions, or at least one of them, hear what's going on... hear what's going on, and maybe try and get this passed at the state level to support some bonding for the firehouse. Is that something that's of interest? Does it make sense? I mean, it seems like if we could get it bonded, we could get the whole thing paid for.
It's of tremendous interest. It's a possibility. I think what we've been told is we couldn't get grants if the fire station had worked so hard on this. But this is something new. I don't know. Carolyn, do you have any insight?
Carol and I met six months ago with Susan Beisowitz. And we asked her, this is way before we're out today. And she said it's very hard to get anything out of state for fire departments when they cost, we are an underprivileged community.
But neither's Camden, and they got it. Nine million dollars.
And more underprivileged than we are.
Really?
They're paid services too, if I'm not mistaken, so I don't...
Anyway, I don't know if it's worth, I just think we should try every avenue we can.
Yeah, nothing ventured, nothing gained if you don't, if you don't try, you don't know.
And what I was told is if you don't keep bugging your legislators about bonding, you're not going to get, it's sort of like a squeaky wheel a little bit.
It's like Shawshank Redemption, letters and they got the library paid for. Right?
Yeah, that was correct. Jackie, would it be helpful in your thought, thinking maybe to have this individual resource you have connect with Carol and maybe participate in that meeting? Because she does one with Senator Needleman.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that too.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm way out of my league here. It's just, we had this conversation, she threw it out, she sent me the details, and she'd done a little bit of research in the meantime. So I just forwarded it out to everybody. What do you think?
It was the same thing when we got to the ninth inning twice on fire trucks for the grants. Said with Congressman Courtney, and we didn't get it. We were right there ninth inning twice.
I, my department's doing a joint venture with the fire department for active shooters and stuff. And I was talking with a fireman about our fire department being volunteer and not being able to get grants. And their assistant chief writes grants. And he's like, no, most of the fire departments in the United States are volunteer. And he goes, you know, I can put you in contact with him and reach out to Adam, maybe come and meet with him. And he goes, if anyone knows how to direct and get money for volunteer fire departments, it's this guy. Just another avenue to explore. They just got a grant for $625,000 to pay for their equipment. And item equipment's on their list, even if we get something towards that.
That's a great idea.
You know, but I'll reach out to him and then see if Adam or Tim wants to come up and meet. And then maybe they can give some pointers on where to look and how to write it and stuff like that.
But I just think that inviting him to come, or even Christine Palm, just, I mean, she's in office for another month. But to invite them to at least come to one of these sessions and explain to them, it, maybe it opens a door, maybe not, but you think it's worth the time?
Certainly worth it. He is doing work on the baseline, isn't he, Carol? Did he say he'd take that to the governor?
He did, and then he said that we'd have to put him for grant.
Oh, really? He backed off?
It wouldn't be till the next legislative session, so if we needed it immediately, it wasn't going to work. So he did get back to me.
I thought that was a good one.
But I can reach out to Norm, see if he can come to one of our firehouse meetings. See what he thinks about bonding versus loans, or borrows.
It is getting close to nine. I see what I had, had a long conversation with myself on the way home from school today. That we're going to go through line by line of the...
Oh, you're sorry.
When I talk to myself, nobody should, should be laughing.
You've been taking minutes.
Two minutes. An excellent point. We're taking minutes on line by line. I follow the logic. And I thought we would go through the line by line of what, where we are in the current review of the budget that ended last in June, okay? But with the time and the enthusiasm, I'm thinking we will back off. I may have Ann Marie take off. Ann Marie and I sat with Carol the other day to talk about it. There's still lots of numbers, no, there's still numbers that we're not quite certain of, alright?
You know that I will never confirm these numbers until they're audited, Bud.
Well, and which do you, for instance, if we were to look at, if I just see budget that ended June, we will see, like, bring it up, there's what, about two hundred and some thousand dollars of under expenditure. But that, that is not a valid number. It shows the school has overspent. Here is the conclusion three of us come to, and I want to give you, which you should be able to think about. We should have under expenditures, are we comfortable still at $150,000 under expenditures? Or you want to go higher or lower? And again, we can go line by line if you folks would like. I believe we did an extremely good job, they'll give us credit, I'm not sure we deserve it, of over collecting revenues by about 200.
Over collecting revenues by about 200, I think our expenses are actually going to be under, further under than what you said.
Oh, really? They're getting further under? I was going 150, giving this 350 of potential surplus from last year. How far under do you want to go?
I think your surplus is going to be closer to half a million.
Which one?
I think your surplus is closer to half a million.
Oh, you want to go up for half a million?
So, can I, can I just go on my step first? So there are kind of two pieces to consider when you're looking at surplus. You have the traditional method that everyone understands. If your revenues are greater than your expenses in a year, you have a surplus. In that case, that's the kind of the half million that I'm talking about, you know, pending our audit, which will inevitably move some things around. Now, the other piece that we see in government accounting is the deficit you may or may not include in your budgeting process. So when we created the 23-24 budget and then made our modifications throughout the year, we said that we were going to dip into a million dollars of our surplus. That didn't happen at all. So we're really, if you consider all of the pieces, looking at a surplus of 1.5 million.
Great, good. But let's talk about what we would be adding to last year's surplus. We have a surplus, a dollar amount of surplus. We are going to add to it.
Right, so if we look at our consolidated surplus, like in our financial statements where we started that 23-24 year, we can add 500 to that.
You want to add 500 to that? Are you feeling reasonably confident?
I feel reasonably confident.
Which, by the way, we should pat ourselves on the back. If we had a budget that was assuming we would dip into surplus and we come out of it with a surplus, we have done a fine job sitting here, sitting on top of these kinds of things. So the question becomes for you to think about it. Until we get this finalized, that is all we're going to do with it. What would you like to do with half a million dollars, $500,000, if anything? We have bumped up to the phrase surplus a couple of times tonight. We have spent it a couple of times tonight. We're talking about moving money back, we are going to ask the town to allow us to pay money out of surplus, which is where these dollars will be. But it will allow us to return our levels of surplus to about where we started the year. Now, we've talked about 150. There are still sitting out there somewhere, and I do mean sitting, a payload that desperately came, they came to us during budget time. And that is, we had an estimate of what, 275, something like that, 225 for it? That is something we should think about, especially if we have surplus, so we do not, we are not going into our surplus. That still gives us potential dollars, not many, to go back into prior accumulated surplus. Is there anything else that we have talked about that needs to be funded? We've certainly talked about, we didn't do capital, and we're collecting dollars along the way.
I would love to see us fund, we've done so little maintenance on so many of our town assets. And I know at the last meeting, the local meeting, Carol and our building inspector were talking about bringing somebody in on a part-time. If we have surplus money, I'd like us to actually do an audit of our buildings and hit the top priorities and maybe use some of that money to do some immediate repairs. That's what I want to see.
No problem with that. Carol? But again, I do believe until we get confidence, and that confidence probably needs an auditor or a smartphone, which was planned on when? When do you think they'll be finished? November, December?
Unless we get an extension, the deadline is December 31st. That's the goal, but I might die at getting us there.
And last item, the priority we began to spend, before we had certainty, we began to spend it. And that sort of worked out for us. We had Rose, we wanted to expand, which we didn't spend all, or were money, did we spend some?
We did.
Didn't we spend all of them? And in the current budget, there was an item that you wanted everyone to be aware of.
Yes, yes.
Do you remember what it is?
Oh, I remember exactly what it is. You will find in a bunch of cases, primarily on the salary lines and the elementary school line. I have been talking to the auditors about our accounting methodology since I arrived here. There are two main methods of accounting. There's cash accounting, and there's accrual accounting. I don't want to get too technical and complicated, but cash accounting is exactly what it sounds like. If you pay a dollar out today, you recognize that today. If you get that dollar next month, you recognize it next month. But in accounting, the preferred method is the accrual method. So what that says is, I did work in June, but I don't get paid until September. I should recognize my revenue in June when I did the work. So we have already been doing that with all of our accounts payable and paying our bills. One area where we were not doing it was our payroll, because it's a very manual process. In the case of the town side, you always have that one payroll that's in part of June and part of July. You have to manually go through, you know, allocate things out. And the same is the case for the schools. So in the past, because that accrual wasn't done, normally what you would see at the beginning of every year is kind of us pulling some of that time back into the year. And then you would see a negative, so going forward, it would all kind of smooth out nicely. When you make that transition, you don't have that negative at the beginning of the year. So it sort of looks like you're shoving a little bit too much payroll into a year when you make that adjustment. So I spoke to the auditors about it. I said, you know, optically, like, this looks terrible. It looks like, you know, we overpaid a bunch of people. And they said, you know, it's kind of up to you how you want to handle it. But if you're going to move to this more proper methodology, it's going to happen at some point. So when you see the school overspent by $62,000, it's not all the case.
Alright, so you're recommending that we do make the move?
Yes, so I did, and that's what is reflected in here. I just didn't want anyone to look at these numbers in panic. If you'd like, I can go through and sort of, I can't believe I'm committing more of my time to this, but try to give a better picture of what it looks like without that accrual piece in it.
I accept.
Thank you.
So we're going, in your new work, you're going to do accruals for budgets?
I'm doing accruals, I'm adding in accruals for our payroll.
Just in the budget we look at, you will do accruals?
It's already in there.
So even though someone did not get paid for work until the next paycheck, you will reflect it, Carol? Alright, makes sense, I guess. But my only reason for guessing is, and that's fine, the backwards went to it, that's fine. It's just, everything else doesn't have that same accrual charge.
No, it does.
So if you, if someone takes a tree down and doesn't get paid for two weeks, you are going to bring all accruals into our budget?
That is how the accounting system is built.
Your new accounting system's going to do that?
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have accruals in there?
Yeah, any kind of account...
Will we see accruals in a different climate?
No.
So there'll be a lag in funds on hand, in essence, because you're going to come for the expense when the work happens and the payment will be happening there. So that's where the differential will be.
I'm not sure we've ever worried that much about the difference in cash and accruals.
No.
We've never really tried to match up Congress cash and our accruals. Alright folks, we have one more item there that says new business. Anything else anyone would like to chat about, pass the presidency?
We are getting very hot and heavy with implementing this new accounting system. I'm spending four whole days on it next week, according to the implementation calendar. And they said we are still well on track for our January 1st school.
So far, so good? You like it?
Yeah, well, it's not new to me, so that helps a lot.
For 9:02, if you are here grabbing motions of adjournments. I got a one, got a two, thank you. I assume no one wants to discuss it? All in favor? Thank you.